You could all stand for the pledge, please. Walter, could you listen to the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We'll get a moment of silence for the missing swimmer at Dykes Point.
Okay.
We are clean.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll move to the mayor's remarks.
First, I'd like to amend the agenda to add a couple of items. To item five, add an appointment for Jason Ezra, Democrat, to the zoning commission, filling a vacancy. His term would be May 28th, 2019 through November 30th, 2019. Do I have a motion to accept that? Oh, you want to do them individually or you want to do them together?
Individually.
Yeah. Anybody like to move on?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Add to the agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'd also like to add, under item eight, our executive session, eight, that is shown right there for Candlewood Solar, to invite John Tower and Vincent McDermott from Malone and McBroom. And then add item eight A, which would be to move into executive session to update, to receive an update on Century Brass, inviting Attorney DeBella, Attorney Casa Grande, and Attorney John Tower. Do I have a second on that?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, mayor's comments, briefly. First, kind of an update concerning the missing swimmer. We're still unable to locate the swimmer. The state diving team was still out, I believe, until dark, and then they will cease and then start again tomorrow, which will be the state of New Milford and Danbury. They will continue their search tomorrow, and if there's any, if the swimmer is found, they'll notify us. But as of right now, that's kind of the update for that. Early this morning, we had a fire at Harry Brook condos. That fire was responded by New Milford Fire, Northville, most of our fire units here, Brookfield, Danbury, all responded as well. So we want to thank them for their response. Four units were damaged. During the damage, Red Cross came to help with the families, as well as our social service team. So they're preparing to see where some of the individuals that did lose their home can be, can be put in for the time being. Also, a boat yesterday. There was some talk about a boat capsizing on the Husetonic River by Addis Park. It did do that. From what I understand, the motor stalled. It did flip over. Everyone was okay. The boat was put back, but just wanted to update the council on that as well. I went to Len Deming Park all three days. Was done very well with our security upgrades, our new security team. The residents seemed very happy with the upgrades, and I want to thank the park and rec team, our security team, lifeguards, our park rangers. Her job well done for the first weekend, so I want to thank them for that. Also want to thank everybody that was involved in our Memorial Day parades. We're very successful, both in Gaylordsville and in town. It was great to see everybody come out to honor our members, our fallen members of the armed forces, men and women, that paid the ultimate sacrifice. So it was great to see that community involvement. Real quickly, too, on our roads. We're continuing with the completion of our designs. The roads will go out to bid once the bid packages are out. Then we'll look for the contractors to give us our bids, and then I'll be bringing forward those updates to the council. Currently, Long Mountain Road was paved with its final course, and right now they're working on Squire Hill. Drainage is completed. The, most of the sub base is done as well, so they're working on that, completion of that road. They're looking at maybe sometime in August. For the library update as well, right now the bid documents will be going out in the next couple of weeks. So beginning the bid documents, we're also looking to hire a clerk of the works. He'll be responsible for looking at our project to make sure our project is on time and at cost or below cost. And then also, we're looking at working with our partners in the Board of Education for our roofs, which we know will be Seronoble this year, the high school, depending on what course that we do use, as they're moving their summer program to the high school while we do Seronoble School. And we're going to do the roof here at Town Hall, as well as the Max. And that's basically what I have for today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item four is our consent agenda, and I have one clerical correction to make to the minutes. The regular town council meeting of May 13th minutes, there was a mistake on an appointment for the building committee. It says Ronald Schlesinger, and it should be Jonathan. So apologies to Jonathan. So item four A is the minutes. Item four B, tax collector, move to accept the consent agenda with the typographical correction.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item five, appointments, reappointments. We have appointment to the Board of Finance of Amy Fotopoulos, Democrat, to an alternate seat from May 28th, 2019 to January 31st, 2020. Film commission appointment of Mark Avery, Republican, see an alternate or full?
Alternate?
Alternate. May 28th, 2019 to January 31st, 2020. And the just added appointment to the zoning commission of Jason Ezra, Democrat, term of May 28th, 2019 to November 30th, 2019, filling a vacancy.
2019 or 2020?
Pardon?
2019 or 2020?
2019.
2019.
I can't hear what she said.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Yes, he's, he's at it. He is 2019. So I moved the, those pre-mentioned appointments.
Do I have any discussion? Dr. Mullen?
Was Jason's name brought to you by the DTC?
No, it was not.
Have you asked the DTC for a name?
They provided a name, I believe, a few months ago, three or four months ago. That position was not empty at the time. Position, the position was, excuse me?
Why not that name now?
Spoke with Mr. Ezra. He has contract experience, has billing experience.
I'm not questioning Ezra at all. That's, that's not a problem.
Absolutely.
The point is, and this goes back for years and years and years, the minority at this table, whatever party it is, should have their name coming from their, you know, either DTC or the RTC. Now, it's a name that should be brought forward. So, that's the point I'm making. Minority doesn't have that consideration from the ruling party, then that's a major problem.
Any further discussion?
Vote on these separately?
Sure. Vote's up to the...
Okay. I read them as one, but I'd be happy to if you'd like. So item one, I move for Board of Finance, Amy Fotopoulos. You want me to read all the dates again?
No need.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does she have to withdraw the motion that she originally made?
Yes.
I will withdraw my original motion, putting all people together.
Do I have a second to draw?
For crime.
Thank you.
Okay. Now I move to please take the appointment of Amy Fotopoulos, Board of Finance.
Second.
And for discussion, I met with Amy, and was very happy to see that she wanted to come on board with her experience. This was a name that was brought forward from the Democratic Town Committee, and I think Amy would make a great addition to our Board of Finance team.
And Amy's here?
She's right here.
Aye.
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Move the appointment of Mark Avery as an alternate to the film commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you to Mr. Avery.
Move the appointment of Jason Ezra to the zoning commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? Dr. Mullen?
Mr. Barnes, the Chair of the RTC, brought this issue up specifically when I believe it was Dan Strawn, his name was brought up a couple of years ago, and spoke at that point about exactly what I'm speaking about now. So I will be abstaining from this vote.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ezra.
Item number six, discussion and possible action on adoption of some resolutions our grant writer is here to talk about. And we would approach these separately, Tammy, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
They are two distinct authorizations. Good evening, council members. Happy birthday, council member.
Thank you.
Tammy Bearden, the Grants and Compliance Specialist for the town of New Milford. What you have before you is a request coming from my office, authorizing initially the mayor to sign the documents, agreements, and contracts related to the Connecticut Recreational Trails Grant Program, which will bring $180,500 into town. Those dollars will be used to design the construction specifications and contract documents for Phase One of the New Milford River Trail, which is the section that will run from Boardman Road south to around approximately the entrance to the Medenstil property.
For edification, Tammy, there is a matching grant that's due?
Yes, you are correct. My apologies. There was a 20% match required for that project, and it was a project match, not a grant match. So the total match on our part that was due was just over $45,000. Through the coordination, because all of the grants and projects are running through my office, I was able to target the environmental assessments that we have going on for Youngsfield Road at Location Six and Location Twenty, although they have been done in the past. They do qualify as a match for this grant program, and it is along the River Trail property there, as well as the 2019 seasonal trail cleanup and clearing that the youth agency is going to be doing, utilizing the Summer Youth Employment Program that I was able to bring into town for families this summer to employ. Trail program will be employing eight members of the youth for six weeks throughout the summer. So those two projects combined meet or match requirements. They're projects we were doing anyways, so this grant for $180,500 does not cost the town any dollars.
Nice job.
So does this commit us to that phase before any other phases? Because if memory serves me correctly, that phase includes that very costly hanging bridge sidewalk component to get around where the railroad is and the embankment is, and that section in between Boardman Bridge and the Medenstil property.
Okay.
Or is it just a design phase and finalization for the next set of drawings and evaluations?
It's the final design and construction documents. So this will move this phase of that River Trail forward, further than any other phases currently. The original application that went into DEEP was over $700,000. The grant request was $574,000, and that included Phases One through Three. So that included the phase we're discussing this evening, the second phase further south along what they refer to as the pinch point, and the third phase connecting Helen Marks Park to the north end of the River Trail at Youngsfield as it exists now. Connecticut DEP had an overwhelming amount of applications, and although it was highly competitive, through my discussions with DEP, we were able to secure a portion of funding, and they chose the $180,000, which is dedicated towards that section of the trail.
And we have to do that section. We can't do Phase Three, for example, and go from town north through, to Helen Marks.
That is not what they approved. They approved Phase One based on the available dollars that they had.
Okay. Thank you.
Katie?
Tammy, remind me, why was the northernmost section termed Phase One? How did that occur?
That was termed based on the Malone and McBroom study.
I simply... It connects to nothing that's complete, whereas the third phase connects to what is already on the ground.
Yes.
So what could happen is if we were to go ahead with this, is that we would have this block in the middle with nothing attached to either side of it, sort of like we have.
Well...
Sega, yeah.
It does extend the, the portion of the River Trail from Sega Meadows, it does extend that section south. However, again, this isn't the construction dollars.
Right. This is just...
Just designed.
Yeah. So we'll have a design for something that is one of the most expensive parts of the trail, and it still, if we were to come upon the money to do it, it would still be there, and what we have here in town would not be connected to it until Phase Two and Phase One were funded. I see.
Yes.
Okay.
Mike, just so that I'm clear, Tammy, so we're thinking from Sega Meadows to Medenstil?
Yes.
It has nothing to do with the pinch point, then?
No.
Correct. This is north of the pinch point, and the phases were identified, those three phases in the original application as a block. So hoping to connect the Sega Meadows trail portion to the Youngsfield trail portion in its entirety, to do those construction specs and documents that would be required for the actual construction. And unfortunately, with the round of applications in the fall that DEEP sought, or had, they sought to provide us with some funding, and the construction documents being $180,000 and change most closely matched the dollars they had available to bring into New Milford as well.
So just one more question, Mr. Mayor. So the, you're saying that it's $180,000, $180,500 free?
Yes.
And the $45,000, 20% match, I wasn't clear on that.
So that match is actually made up of other grants that we are able to put with this project that are allowable by DEEP to provide our, our portion of the match, although it's not, it doesn't have to be taxpayer, taxpayer dollars. It, it doesn't have to be local taxpayer dollars that provide the match. It's a combination, and I submitted documents indicating what we were doing along the riverfront, and because it's DEEP Connecticut Trails Program, both the riverfront work that we are currently doing, as well as the trail seasonal cleanup that we're going to be doing with the workforce grant over the summertime, qualify to be contributory as our match.
So that $45,000, we're just automatically spending anyway?
Those are both grant dollars that are coming in, that can be utilized as New Milford's match towards the $180,500.
More, more humanitarian, of course.
Great. So it doesn't cost us a dime?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
What's the timeframe that we have to use this money?
This is, I believe, a two-year program.
Do you envision in the next two years? I mean, I, it's, I can kind of get the gist of why they chose this, because we called it Phase One.
Yes.
Phase One being what you'd want to do first. So right there, I, it kind of rubs me the wrong way. So what's the chances that the next two years, that we'll be able to get any money to do Phase Three, which is really where it ought to be coming from, and then Phase Two, to hook up to this, not that we'll, not that we have the money to do the construction, I understand that, but again, we're paying for, we're not paying, I understand, but we're using funds that are being given to us for something that would be the third item on our list of things to fund, to do the construction of it. Am I wrong in that?
That I don't know. I, again, the phases were, were dedicated by Malone and McBroom in that riverfront trail study, and that's, that was the foundation for this. This was the second time this grant was applied. For the first time was prior to me being with the town in this role, and the first time it was not funded. So I feel very fortunate that we were funded the second application round. I do believe that Phase Two and Three, as they are named, will have an opportunity to move those projects forward based on the riverfront studies that WXYZ are doing, as well as the other Brownfield Area Revitalization Plan, because that is also focusing on the riverfront. So once those studies are completed in some of the properties that are along those sections of the trail, there's more property owners, if you will, we'll have some more information about those properties and be better poised to get some funding for those sections.
Isn't that the section where we need to get an easement or agreement from each property owner along that road, along that whole distance, correct?
Yes, there are multiple property owners along Section Two and Section Three.
Mike?
I just, I mean, it, part near town would be nice, but Sega Meadows is used a lot, and to extend that would benefit a lot of people, including myself, I'm there at least twice a week running.
Do you, do you have an idea what it would cost to do the actual construction of that most expensive part that hangs out?
I thought it didn't.
That's not there. That's the next one.
Oh, that's the next part? Okay.
That's the fade. That part is across the street from the old Rast factory.
Right. Okay. So what about, to make this, okay, whatever it costs, do we have the funds? We're gonna, we're gonna take $180,000 to look at a design for something that we really can't afford to do.
We can't afford to do.
Right. But as we've done in the past, as long as the plan is there.
We have two years.
No, that's to use the money to get the plan, but the plan doesn't expire. That, those construction documents aren't going to expire in two years. That is going to go into the kitty of other projects that we've had, and when some miracle happens, that money arises, you know, that, those construction dollars will be there. I, I agree with Mike. It's the longest section of the trail. I mean, you can go from Gaylordsville to Medenstil, would be a tremendous trail in its, in its own right. You know, we do have challenges across the street.
And do we have the okay from Medenstil to put this on their, on their progress?
No. Medenstil's Phase Two, far as Phase Two is at, is that far as Phase Two?
Medenstil is Phase Two.
So we're going up to Phase, we're going up to Medenstil?
We said going up to.
The largest piece of property on Phase Two. Without any idea if we'll have the okay to do it.
On Riverside, adjacent to their property, that is built into the proposed calendar to utilize these grant funds, and that's for town staff, for the mayor, and whoever he designates to work with Medenstil for that property easement.
But it is the largest piece of property, and we don't have an easement or any indication that we will get an easement there, do we?
We actually, as of last Friday, will, DOD will approve it, but we have to...
You mean on the road or on the...
On the backside of Medenstil.
On the Riverside?
Correct. But DOD will have requirements such as a wall or a structure to separate the trail from Medenstil, because DOD will be having things in Medenstil.
Source, yes. Right.
So we've made progress. That's big progress.
Did wall.
Never know.
And just to go back for everybody's information, I do have the Malone and McBroom study here with me, and Phase One, the portion we're talking about tonight, the probable construction cost, based on the initial review from Malone and McBroom for that section is $2.2 million. Phase Three, probable cost, which is that pinch point area that runs very, very close to the river along the retaining wall where the railroad tracks is, is approximately $2 million. And actually, Phase Three, the section that is closest to the New Milford River Trail at Youngsfield, is probable, probably estimated at $3.1 million. And some of that is based on some of the properties that are being traversed. So I think the studies that we have currently going on with WXYZ and the other information we are going to be receiving from the Brownfield Area Revitalization Grant is going to be key in moving that section forward and developing more likely cost in the future for that.
I have one question. I don't know, I think you probably could answer this well enough. What, in these amounts, there is not included what it might take to get the okay from all the property owners, correct?
I do not know what they, if they included costs of the rights away or easement in their estimates, I would imagine they would have included some ballpark figure, because this study was, was fairly in-depth for all of the sections of the trail, but I don't have the details of what they used to develop those.
If you knew, no, I wouldn't expect that.
Do we need an update from the Bike and River Trail Committee?
Right this minute?
Right this minute. But do we need to put it on the next agenda so that there, so we understand that?
Well, we're holding on this now.
I understand that.
It's just a rabbit hole to me in a lot of ways. I mean, I'm not opposed to the trail, I just think that's backwards. That's me.
But don't disagree.
Any other discussion?
We need a second.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I moved it. Correct.
Mr. Ezra, does he have a second? Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Could you say it opposed, please? No, I said aye.
Okay. Next is...
The second half of this?
Yes. The second half of it is a standard nondiscrimination agreement that we must have to enter into. The mayor needs your authorization in the form of the resolution that's in front of you.
Second.
The resolution, I guess we need to read this into the record, be it resolved that Pete Bass, Mayor of the town of Milford, is authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, documents related to the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, Connecticut Recreational Trails Grant Program in the amount of $180,500.
That was a previous one.
Next one?
I know, I didn't read it, though.
Oh, thank you.
I thought that would be a good idea.
Yes.
Since I didn't, I was so overwhelmed with the whole thing. So, moving the second half here is the resolution, be it resolved that the policies of the town of New Milford comply with nondiscrimination agreements and warranties of the Connecticut General Statute, Section 4A 60 and 4A 60A as amended.
Second. Any discussion?
Tell us what you want.
I'm sorry?
Can you just go, just review what the statute is, so we know what we're going on?
Just so we comply with being nondiscriminatory, or...
Standard.
Like any employer?
Right.
Standard nondiscrimination disclosures through the policies we have in our personnel office and...
I'm with you.
By taking their grant, we're going to nondiscrimin...
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Good job.
Thank you, Tammy.
And Tammy, could I ask you to stay for a moment, too, concerning, I know Mike is here as well, concerning the pedestrian safety improvement sidewalks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Move that we take action on State Grant Application 95-256 pertaining to Route Seven Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project with matching funds of $400,000. That's town's matching funds of $400,000.
Mr. Zarba?
Second.
Have a second. Okay. So this is something that's come before the council a while ago, and we were talking about actually two. So this first grant application is for sidewalks that would go from the condos, Mike, I believe, the condos across the high school.
Correct. There were several sections of sidewalk that would be inclusive in this, in the entire grant. And the $400,000 match would be for both design and construction work. We had talked back and forth, I think, a little bit about the opportunity to, if you so desired, to only fund the matching portion of the design monies currently, and then get to the construction phases of it at a, you know, once we enter that, that phase of it. But in terms of sections of sidewalk, Candlewood Lake Road south to Sunny, to Sullivan Road, along the west side of the road, section from Pickett District Road south to the Three Brothers Diner, basically along Pettybone School, frontage, the Route Seven frontage. I believe there's a small section in and around Taco Bell, I believe in front of Taco Bell, that was supposed to be filled in, in the gap. Believe the other section that we had set up for this particular design was Asprey Duck Avenue from downtown New Milford, the end of Main Street up to Canterbury School.
I have just a quick question. When we had this long discussion about this in the past, I thought it was determined that we did not have to put the sidewalks in those exact places.
That... That, you were correct on that.
So, what you're gonna, what you're talking about now holds true except that the location could be determined. We had a long discussion about the long Route Seven by Big Y, da-da. So, okay, that still could be the case of, that we could change it.
I think the philosophy was, what we talked about was to get the design firm on to hold some public information meetings and determine if, or where the best sidewalk locations might be.
That still could happen, right?
That, that has not happened yet, no, we haven't.
No, but it could, in other words, we're not, we're not tied to that particular stretch if we didn't wanna be.
Correct, and we've verified that with the, with our contact, that the, well, the state liaison's engineer, which is V H B, has verified that we can make changes to the, to the locations. We, frankly, we've already done that once to get the Aspetuck Ave section added to the grant in lieu of other sections of sidewalk that were previously applied for. So, we have done it once. We certainly, you know, can do it again should we find, you know, proper information to, to make that argument.
I know when we, find Mike.
Can, can we just do a section or does it have to be all 400,000 dollars? Like hypothetically, could we go from, just go up Aspetuck Avenue and say, okay, the, the town part is 50,000 dollars?
The, so the 400,000 dollars is predicated on a 20% match of funds that we've been offered. So, if we did less, we would, you know, just a grand amount would be a, a lower amount at that point. The, again, the 400,000 is the complete package, design and construction costs, at least in our estimates that we submitted to the state for the sections of sidewalk that we included. I, I would gather we would keep the footage, linear footage roughly the same, you know, no matter which sections of sidewalk we do, but certainly there could be more expensive sections than others. I would anticipate the sections in front of, say, the high school are quite a bit cheaper, frankly, to do than something down by, you know, the Cook House or something like that, just because of other constructions you might have. So, length of sidewalk is gonna be shorter for the same construction dollars in an area like, you know, between Sunny Valley Road and Bridge Street compared to an area like in front of the high school or, you know, down there Sullivan Road and Canterbury Lake Road South.
One question. Who maintains that in the wintertime?
Property owners adjoining the sidewalks.
There's still building in on the property, so.
Still the property owners. Doesn't have to be a building, it's still, it's rough with the property.
So, Mike, real quick to answer your question. I've asked Dan Calhoun to help us, especially some of what the maintenance cost would be. So, and this would just be an approximation. We use third parties to give us these approximations. So, for John Petty Bone School, and that's average winter storms, so it's not above average. And cleaning, you're looking at 6,636 dollars per year. If we were doing the sidewalks by the high school because we'd be using union contracts with that because it is on school ground, you'd be looking at approximately 19,260 dollars. So, you'd be looking at it.
Per year?
Correct, that's with snow removal and everything else. So, you'd be looking at about 25,896 a year approximation. To answer your question.
Lisa?
Couple of things, that's okay. So, if I do the math right, we're talking about by approving the grant match, accessing 2 million dollars worth of grant money?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, and you mentioned in your comments that we could break apart the design versus the construction in terms of the matching. So, what would those dollar amounts be instead of the whole 400,000 dollars?
I believe 70,000.
For design?
For design.
And then 430 for construction?
Am I too, I may be off on the numbers.
We had 70s in mind.
Okay, that sounds familiar.
Is that sign of mine?
And one more question?
Hello?
Oh, there you go.
Design, the design cost were estimated to be about 330,000 dollars. The 70 dollars that the council previously approved and moved to the Board of Finance was to get to the one-third design phase. At that point, the town needs to officially decide if we are going to make the commitment to have this project done. Or, at that point, after the public information meetings and the third design, so a very strategic conceptual design and conversations, we could then, you know, remove ourselves from the project in its entirety. We will have spent 70,000 dollars, but we would not be obligated to move forward.
Okay, interesting, I have one more. Thank you for that, and.
Thanks, Tammy.
Now, it's gone again, hold on. Move it. It'll come back, sorry. Oh, no, I have it. So, in the, sorry, in the design phase, you mentioned the public information services are great, but I am a big proponent of hard data, as we all know. So, could we do some pedestrian studies? Have we talked about that? And actually doing some, like you would do a traffic study, do a pedestrian study? How many people are actually walking along that particular section? Because I know that's been a discussion that we've had. Subjectively, I don't know that we've gotten any real data around that.
I'm just gonna stand here because I, I feel more questions coming this way, so.
We certainly could have the engineering consultants perform. I, I, you know, traffic, pedestrian studies aren't, in my opinion, are not nearly as validated from, particularly from the safety standpoint, which, which this grant is targeted at. Safety for all users in modes, whether it's one person or, I, I don't disagree that the busier sections, which I think we all know generally where they are along the road, some of the reason the grant was applied for as it was and the particular properties that were picked were because they have no other methodology for funding. We own the properties and either we fund them or we fund them through a grant. Those are the only two options. All of the other properties along Route Seven, as they develop or redevelop, we've been successful at many of them voluntarily, for the most part, putting in sidewalks as part of their site plan approvals. We've encouraged other ones to also do that and they've also eventually complied with doing that because it's a benefit to their business, a benefit to their community. The properties that we picked, particularly in front of Petty Bone and particularly in front of the high school, can't, will never do that. They, they won't redevelop, they won't, you know, nothing else is gonna happen with them. There's no other methodology that we would have other than coming to you and asking for the taxpayers to fund it purely. So, we picked those properties initially in our grant application specifically for that reason. Wasn't related to traffic studies, it wasn't related to other things. It was related to a community philosophy of a P O C D plan that we said, we need to have sidewalks along these stretches of road in whole, from Bridge Street all the way down to the high school, from, you know, Aspetuck Ave up to Canterbury School. Wherever they were, you know, the sidewalk plans and the, and the studies that we've done in town, the goal is to have sidewalks on all of those stretches of road. And so, you know, you can do 4,000 linear feet or 7,000 linear feet. You know, we filled in the gaps with what we felt it was, it was gonna be best served from a community standpoint in terms of tax dollars benefiting from that. We did not predicate it on what section was, was needed the most or not because the idea is that if we build them for our facilities, the town facilities and other ones, that we can fill in gaps that, and, and we will fill in as many gaps as we can, but that other people also would build sidewalks, frankly, not even because it's required by statute or a zoning thing, but because it benefits them as a, as a business and benefits them in our community.
And I appreciate that. I don't wanna minimize the safety aspect of that, but when you mentioned that we can move around, we don't necessarily have to commit to those particular locations, that caused the question in my head. So, I appreciate the additional information. You know, I'm, I think there's very little risk in approving the money to go through the matching for the design if that's all we have to do at this point to potentially access the 2 million dollars.
Katie?
Mike, so, I understand that it's less expensive to put a sidewalk down the straight part of Route Seven between the condos and, and from there over to the Three Brothers. But clearly, there, there is a safety issue. As we spoke last time, we had the same discussion, from Big Y going south along towards Starbucks. And all of those businesses have had an opportunity for a long, long time to put in a sidewalk and they haven't because we didn't have it as, as a demand requirement, okay? So, there are no sidewalks there. And if we're talking about putting a sidewalk in where it costs us the least amount of money for the longest amount of sidewalk, to me, that's not taking public safety into consideration. That's just looking at how we can best take some money and, and get some sidewalks out, hoping someday we'll have sidewalks in all those places where we now know people are walking close to cars, across driveways. I mean, it's a, it's a hazard we all know about. So, I understand that we can change it and I appreciate what Lisa just said. I also know that to take money for a design of something that we don't have 400, give or take, thousand dollars to add to it, it doesn't seem quite kosher to me because, you know, the, the state's not got excess money either. So, we're gonna take 70 grand to do a design for something that I could sit here right now and say, I don't know where we're gonna get the 400,000, do you? And why do that? Why not wait until we know we can do something with it and we have an idea where we really want to put it? Because asking to take money to do a study that we maybe never make anything happen isn't gonna make the state amenable to us in the future.
So, can I make sure that we're talking about, the grant we applied for was to design a constructable sidewalk, not to study where sidewalks should be in town.
No, I understand that, Mike, but it's 400 grand.
Although I think we can advocate for spending some of the money researching some of that with our engineering consultant. I don't believe, I didn't ask the state this question specifically, but I'm, I'm, you know, the application we made was, was to commit to hiring a consultant firm to design a set of construction plans that could be bid for construction.
Right, but we can't afford to do the construction, Mike.
Then this isn't the right grant to, to do that, is what I'm saying.
Perhaps not, perhaps not. And I'm not saying that it's not your decision, I get that. But my point is, why get us, to spend anybody's money to have a, a plan rolled up in the corner when we just came through a referendum? We all know, we don't have 400,000 dollars.
I guess I'll try to explain this. Eight miles of sidewalk to be done on Route Seven, up and down from Bridge Street to the high school, four roughly, four or five miles on each side, that can be done. Some of them are already done, many of them are not done. The idea is to get as many linear feet of sidewalk along that stretch of road that we can get with grants that were available.
But if nobody's gonna walk on it, why do we want it?
A vast amount of that part of it, that's what we applied for. We applied for constructing sidewalks along that stretch.
Yes, but that, to me, as I started out, I see, maybe I'm the only person in this town who feels this way, but to me, that's just putting sidewalks someplace to say we put sidewalks out. And again, we still have to pay for the construction up to 400,000, which, like most things in life, will probably cost more.
We have to pay a 20, or a 20% share, correct?
Yeah, and we don't have that. So, rather than spending money we don't have or trying to find a way to get it and putting sidewalks where people aren't really walking, or maybe they are, but not with the dangerous area, and maybe there's, we need the study to find out. The point is, we still don't know any more than we did and we talked about this last month. And yet, we're gonna take 70 grand and maybe not do anything with it. I don't see the positives here. I'm missing them.
Mike?
Mike, are there other grants out there available besides this particular?
To do, to do what, to study sidewalk locations?
To either do the study or to do what you guys are doing here with the design and the construction. I mean, are we just, are we rabbitholed into this one particular one? Or can we go out and look for other ones?
This was one, yeah, I mean, you can answer about all the grants available, but this was certainly one grant that was available at the time that we applied for roughly almost two years ago, I think.
Yes.
That we applied for.
This application was applied for almost two years ago. It's a transportation alternative program. It's federal dollars and it's a two-year cycle of funding. So, we just passed up the funding for this current 2019 round because their focus was on regionalization. As I've spoken to the state's contractor that works on behalf of state D O T because they are, they are monitoring and implementing these federal dollars and they have a contractor on board. As I spoke with them, what I did learn was that when this application originally went in, New Milford was not selected. Another town was selected. But going through the process, much of the discussion that you're having now, that town dropped out. And that's how the funding came to New Milford approximately one year ago. We got notice that the funding of almost 1.8 million dollars was made available to us to construct those sidewalks. The caveat being, there was a 20% match requirement. Much of that 20% will go towards the design of the sidewalks. So, are there dollars in this amount for sidewalk construction? I haven't seen any.
Oh, that's my next question. You would be the person to ask.
I have not seen any. And the shift in the program this year has been much more towards regionalization. There was some talk with the River Trail Committee and the Bike and Trail Committee on some of the things and if the 2019 tap opportunity was something that would be available to further some of those design and construction documents. And based on the focus of the program, that was, it was not likely at all.
Right.
So.
Walter?
Situation to me is like kicking the can down the road. We built a brand-new high school on a piece of commercial property that was absolutely valuable. We should have put a metal roof on that building and we didn't do that. All that's in hindsight now. We're gonna spend 200,000 dollars to fix the roof. We spend 15, 20,000 dollars a year just reshingling. We should have had sidewalks on Route Seven when they expanded the road. What's it gonna cost us down the road to do now what we're supposed to be doing for Route Seven? I'm for this program.
I have a question for Walter.
And we're getting what, 20 cents, 20 cents? It's gonna cost us 20 cents on the dollar.
But Walter, where are we gonna get the 400,000? I mean.
When that, when it comes to that, we'll have, we'll have to figure that out. I just, I just, again, to me, this is gonna be a hindsight thing. We're gonna look back in time and say, what did we do? Why didn't we do it now and then?
Mike, is there? It's a construct, I know when we talked one about redoing that bridge and we were getting state money and they put a lot more requirements on us to do that. Is that the same with these sidewalks? Is it the same price whether we do it with state money or without state money?
The, generally, I would say sidewalks are pretty consistent whether or not the town funds them or this, or it's funded by federal or state. There might be some additional minor components. Mostly, in this particular case, because we're along state roads, some of the A D A requirements, push buttons for signals and things like that,[1701.32] requirements, push buttons for signals and things like that, you know, are gonna, are gonna be a little bit more expensive simply because they exist on a road like that, where maybe on a town road like, well, pick Kustonikav that we were just talking about, where there's no signalizations, you're just building sidewalks or trails. You don't have some of those other more expensive components that have to be added. But we do have to be ADA compliant, make sure that, you know, the signalizations and the crosswalks and things like that are accessible for all.
My only problem, basically, and I know the money is not there in this issue, but, you know, part of what Walter's saying is, basically, we don't do this now, we'll never do sidewalks, because we're not gonna get, the way the state's going with the amount of grant money, we're not gonna get 80 cents on the dollar to do sidewalks ever again. So, if that's the decision we make, that's fine, but it means we're not gonna follow terms of it, because it's just the money won't be there.
Well, I think it's realistic. I have a question for Tammy. You're familiar more than I am with this. If we take this 70,000 and we do the whatever with it, and we roll them up, and we look for finding the money somewhere, like Walt said, you know, we step on that when we come to it, but we don't find it, and therefore, it just sits there. How does that view by the state? Do they care if we go forward with it?
Is it the state or the federal? Pardon me, you said it was federal dollars.
Is it the federal dollars?
It's federal dollars that are being administered through the state.
Okay. So, will they know? Will they care?
Yes, they will know, but it's built into the design of the program that you have the option at 30 percent design to withdraw your interest. They built it in. Is it, is it a horrible thing? No, it's not. What is, what would be horrible is to continue having this discussion without making any sort of progress. We do then run the risk of having the funding opportunity pulled from us just as it was pulled from a previous community.
So, what does the 30 percent get us?
30 percent design? Does that get us, Mike?
It gets you some of the preliminary questions you guys were asking about. We can do some of the study. Where is it best, you know, where's the, where's the public interest in making sure we're hitting at least some of the areas that, you know, we feel are both safety-related or...
And we would, town would do that. In other words, you'd have some sort of forum, should they be downtown, should they be here, should they be there?
Correct. It's not gonna be an open-ended discussion about it, I don't think, but I think it's gonna be targeted at, at areas that, you know, we can provide some data on.
No, I understand, but it's on us to do that.
And I think, going back to your question earlier, Lisa, and I should've answered this a little bit more broadly, but we did do a study with the Technology Transfer Center, a longer stretch of Route 7. I believe it included Sullivan Road north to roughly, I'm gonna say Tractor Supply. Maybe it was Dog Road, I'm not sure if it was a specific intersection or just an area up there. But it was basically a whole stretch down by the Windmill Diner that we did, you know, some traffic studies on and some important components about what was going on. Not, it's a little bit different. We were doing kinds of all traffic accidents and other related issues as well as pedestrian safety, but... So, we do have some data on, you know, various portions of Route 7, and some information that can go into that. We can analyze that, put that into, you know, the engineering package. And make those recommendations to the state with some valid information as to, you know, where, why we think this is a better portion of the road to do than that, than that portion.
Can that be done in the 30 percent?
That, that was the goal of what we, what I think we had presented to you prior was, the goal would be to understand all that at 30 percent stage, and then have the council and us all weigh in together on whether or not we feel it's something we wanna move forward, or without penalty, as I understand it, we could withdraw that from the state.
Oh, that was my next question.
And still be reimbursed the 80 percent of what we had spent to that point. Let's just say we'd spent 40,000 dollars, you know, we'd be reimbursed the, you know, the 10,000, uh, I'm sorry, we'd be reimbursed to 30,000. We would've laid out 10,000 for that to happen, and we could walk away from the program, and they would not come after the 30,000. You advance beyond that 30 percent stage and get to the full design, and then we say, "We don't wanna do sidewalks at that point." If we spent our 70,000 and the 230,000 in design, they're coming after us for the 230,000.
And your department would be responsible for monitoring that 30 percent, et cetera, making sure we meet all the deadlines and dates and et cetera?
Tammy and I will be the primary contacts on the administration of the grant, so...
Doug?
The biggest problem that I have, being a business owner, is you're spending, we need to give you 400,000 dollars, and there's no plan. So, my question to you is, what happens when you use all the money up, and we're not done with the project?
I guess. I'm not understanding the question.
So, if we do a plan?
Yes.
Get the grant money?
Yeah.
And you get the 400,000, and we have a plan in place, and the money, and it goes over, the project goes over. Where does that money come from?
Well, there's a couple, there's a couple of ways it goes. One, we can't go over the grant authorization without authorization from both you and from the state. So, we will, you know, spend the construction dollars, design and construction dollars that are available to us in a committed letter that we, that we've received already. We've, you know, not entered into the, we've entered into the agreement already, and the mayor has, has already authored that letter back to the state, but we can withdraw that letter at this point in time. So, they've committed a certain amount of funds to the town in Milford at this point. Our matching portion of it is an obligation that we have under that grant, which is what we're requesting. Again, we don't need to authorize all of it currently. I believe you guys have already authorized the 70,000. We don't need, you know, the construction dollars at this point in time. What we need is the commitment that we wanna go to the 30 percent stage, decide at that point in time whether or not we wanna continue our design activities or not. If we do continue our design activities, I believe to further your question, Doug, yes, we are then committed to the full design contract at that point, and the, our 20 percent share, if we were to withdraw before we went to construction, decided not to go to construction, we would then be responsible also for the federal share that was reimbursed to us. Once we get to the construction, we know the funds that we have available, and again, it would be a decision if we, we would either reverse the scope, back off the amount we were gonna construct to meet the construction dollars that we have, or if you and the state or the feds, and it would be optional at that point, you guys could come up with more money, you have that option. The feds, if they had more money, they could, they can offer it, I'm not, you know, saying that they would have it, but if they did, they could commit to that too. And those would be the options you have, or you could just back off the scope to the dollars that you have.
No, no, we talked about it last time you guys heard. Money comes up all the time for these kind of projects, correct? So, it's not like if we don't do this project today, obviously Walter had mentioned it might be more costly down the road, but if we don't have a plan and the costs go over, it could be more, just as much costly if we don't do our due diligence now and get the entire plan in front of us than it can be when we apply for it another time and have the money for it, correct?
Well, the program's constantly changing. Tammy can talk a little bit more about that.
The program, as, as I just mentioned, this is a two-year program. The 2019 round was not focused on this area at all. It was for regional transportation alternative projects, not sidewalks. We wouldn't have had a chance for a sidewalk, for a trail, or anything of that. One thing I do wanna add to this is, the grant, this is, it's a very unusual funding opportunity, even when it was applied for, for the amount of money, it was a fairly simple application. The grant is estimated based on state DOT estimates from a very, very high-level standpoint. Once the design is actually put into place, there are more accurate cost estimates for construction, and there is flexibility with the program so that, of course, our 20 percent is always 20 percent, but they're estimated at 1.8 million dollars. If, based on the design, that construction estimate is 2 million dollars, we still do have the federal commitment to fund the project. So, there would be more discussions along the line, and that's one of the reasons why these federal dollars are being monitored through the state DOT is because they're not only monitoring the process, and there's a detailed process that needs to be approved by both the town, state DOT, and the, the federal administration on this every single step of the way. So, the chances of having a surprise cost or a cost occurrence that is a massive overrun, extremely unlikely, extremely unlikely. One other thing I do wanna add towards the funding is, this is not a single-season construction project, even if it were crammed into a single season of construction, okay? This is a reimbursable grant, so you don't have to come up with all of the dollars at one time. You could actually make a commitment to yourselves or to the community to look forward to dollars through several budget cycles.
Several?
At least two.
Speaking of that, I'd like to hear from our Director of Finance where he might envision this money coming from, the town's matching for.
Can't see that vision? Is that what you're saying, Mike?
I don't have one right now, and frankly, until we address item A on the agenda, you know, I, I've envisioned where the 70,000 is coming from originally, but now, I'm not too sure.
And as Tammy, if I understood what you said, once it gets to the lower levels and they start really looking at it, it could become a more expensive project, which is nice, except that we still owe our matching amount 20 percent.
The pricing might change for construction based on the detail level of the design plans, and, and that's with any construction project out there.
Exactly, but just, just the point that it's ethereal.
Yeah, yeah.
Could you just run through the math for me real fast? Total project cost, the grant or match? This is supposed to be about a 1.8 million dollar construction. Just run through those numbers for me real quick. There's enough to be in the long explanation.
So, the 1.8 million dollars is the federal commitment for construction of these sidewalks? The...
And this is money that we do not have to pay back, or it's a loan?
Correct, do not have to pay back.
Okay, so we got 1.8 if everything is... Go ahead.
Based on that, the estimated design is about 330,000 dollars for complete design.
And that's based on the locations we have right now?
Am I lowballing that? Is it 380?
You're mixing our construction share and our design share. So, I think, I believe our, I, I think, right earlier, 70,000, I think, is our design share, so roughly about 20 percent, that's one-fifth of the total amount. That is probably about right.
Yes.
But, you know, we're in the 300,000 range for design, and we, our share would be another 230,000. Excuse me, 330,000.
Right.
For construction. So, total out of the town's gonna be 400 grand, huh? Correct. I mean, I think we're talking total, construction, design and construction, 400,000 share on the town side. And we have to complete this project within two years? I don't know that we have a timeline on the...
The project is...
What we need to do is make progress, as far as I know. So, this can be stretched over five or six years?
Not that long.
Yeah. We would need to make... It's 100 grand a year?
Two to three.
I, I would say, yeah, two to three.
Two to three.
And so, the estimates to construct is also in the locations and some of that, you know, some of the spots are, such as past Bravo Pizza to the corner where there's a lot of wetlands. I would imagine the cost of design now is gonna be a little bit more expensive as opposed to going on flat dry piece in front of the high school, correct? Because I know that particular area, there's a bridge, and you just go, you know... Right, so, some of these numbers could change depending on our final desire of where we believe. That's already been factored into our, to our cost estimates, but, you know, it could change slightly, but yes. So, we can get a little bit more bang for our buck if we're not in such a difficult place to construct? Right? I mean, if you're going by wetlands, you gotta put a sidewalk in next to a wetland as opposed to a nice dry area, there's a difference in gradeage. It's possible. Well, I think I said, you know, where it's more congested, it might be more expensive too because of retaining walls, property issues, or grades, whatever. Yeah.
All right. Good for a moment. And...
And so, the reason why this actually is back to the council was prior to this approval, after this approval, the council and their procedures with all grants now wanna know where we're getting the money. So, that's why it's back, because it's by the council's will. You guys wanna know where the money's coming from.
So, our argument, the debate really is where we're coming up with 400,000 dollars. That's simple.
And, and on top of that...
The state that's got no money.
And it's top of that, and on top of that as well, is the cycles, how this is all gonna be funded.
Right.
And as we're saying tonight, the council did approve 70 prior, but your new procedures that you want, you wanna know the whole match. So, it's back here, and it's back here tonight because the state is telling Tammy and Mike, "Make a decision, or we're pulling it."
So, did we spend the 70 grand already that was approved?
Haven't done anything.
No.
So, that money we approved, Board of Finance approved, so basically...
Board of Finance hasn't approved it yet. Nothing yet, because the procedures for the council was to bring it back to, to figure out exactly how we were going to plan the town's matching grant. That was the procedures that were outlaid to the, from the council. So, it's back here tonight.
However, what I heard, which is a slightly different twist tonight, is that after the 70, we can choose to not move forward. So, I appreciate that we have now the total picture of what needs to be spent over the timeframe and kind of the intricacies, but we've already approved 70, and, you know, we can say no harm, no foul, and stop at that point if we find that we can't find the money.
At 30 percent, right.
But we haven't spent the 70 yet.
That's a different problem, but, but to me, the motion of approving 400,000, I don't think we have to do that tonight, from what I heard. We've already approved the 70, they should go ahead, and then we come, they come back with 30 percent and say, "Here's what we have at the 30 percent design phase. Do we wanna move forward?" And we can vote yes or no then. Am I understanding it correctly?
The state doesn't require you to approve the, the full match at this point, no.
So, we really don't have to, I hate to say this, we don't, we've already made a decision, let me put it that way. It's not that we don't have to do anything, we've already made a decision to get to the 30 percent design phase.
So, to, well, let's see with the council. So, Greg, where would the 70,000 come from?
Originally, I was considering taking it from contingency.
The other problem is, we don't have, I don't know when we're gonna need to spend the rest of the 400,000, but, you know, unless something goes really well, it's in town, that money's not gonna all of a sudden appear.
But again, there's no penalty for us at the 30 percent design phase not moving forward. And we've already said we wanted to move forward with that 70,000 dollars. We've already approved that.
Right. The only thing I would say is, what is the view that we're doing it this way when we're sitting here discussing the fact we don't have the money to go forward after that? So, what will we end up with? 30 percent of a 70,000 dollar design exercise, right?
Yeah, 12 months from now, maybe the economic picture is very different. I would hope so.
We have 12 months?
How long do we have?
If there's progress, so if, if, no, this is, this is very, very, very important. If there's progress, if we're able to show the state that, that we are making progress on the design, in other words, if we're able to start working with the selected design consultant firm and hammer out and get to the point of making a contract during the next couple of months, because that will take probably six to eight weeks, we will be indicating to the state that we are making progress towards this project. That progress is extremely important because there is a substantial risk coming up at the end of September, that if we don't make progress, I would say during the month of June, that we will lose that funding.
So, 1.8 funding.
Yep, yes.
But progress means working with our selected design consultant, which means a contract, which means money.
Correct. So, so essentially, what, what has to happen is, every step of this, as I said, is monitored by the state and run through approval. There is a committee put together designated by the mayor to interview all of the firms. We interviewed all of the firms according to the guidelines that were provided to us. They were very, very specific. We had to have each step of that process approved as we went along. We narrowed it down to our first-choice firm. We can't award a contract via our own purchasing authority regulations. However, in this progress, in, in this process that is handed to us and that is strictly adhered to, we need to, to meet, we need to have planning meetings with our first-choice design firm to start getting towards what the design total cost will actually be. It's a very regulated process. Once that happens, then it comes time for a contract. Based on that contract amount, we need to have those funds in place to satisfy our own purchasing regulations for the mayor to sign that contract. So, I've been speaking to the state through their liaison, and the indication was, if we can start having those planning meetings with our selected firm and start working through that towards a design contract cost, they will consider that progress.
And that could take months?
That will likely take six to eight weeks.
Yeah, six, eight, a couple months.
Because it involves the town.
Then we would be in the new fiscal year?
You would be in a new fiscal year, we would have a solid cost for what the design is, and at that point, the muddies would need to be identified. What you're discussing tonight is actually, as the mayor indicated, you wanted a grants policy and guidelines. So, this discussion is simply an informative discussion. I don't believe the mayor is looking for anything in particular. If he is, then that's my mistake, but a discussion for full disclosure to all of you as council members, as well as the public, on what this project will cost us to take the 1.8 million dollars.
And it's very helpful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
Yes, we do.
So?
Because the 70 came back because of our new rule, correct, Mayor?
Okay, I suppose a motion on the floor.
Thank you.
To act on the state grant application number 95256 pertaining to Route 7 pedestrian safety improvement project with matching funds of 400,000 dollars.
It's a matter of time. I'm not sure what I can say.
And, and again, just for clarification, what I heard tonight is, we don't have to approve four hundred thousand dollars, what we have to approve has already been approved, which is the seventy thousand to get us to the thirty percent design completion.
So, let's, let's withdraw. I withdraw my motion, let's, because that dollar amount isn't in part of this at all, and it shouldn't have been on here. So, I'm going to withdraw my motion on seven A.
Withdraw the second.
So, with our new grant policy, can we have two, we're gonna need two motions, one to reaffirm the seventy thousand dollars, and then the next one would be a motion as to where you're gonna take the seventy thousand dollars, and then would go to the Board of Finance.
I thought, first of all, we already approved it, we shouldn't have to discuss that again. If you make a commitment to approve something, you're approved, you shouldn't go back on it.
And we need to make a motion of where we're gonna prove it, where we're gonna take it from.
I thought that was part of the original motion.
I thought finance decides.
No.
You can give discretion to finance-
Correct.
-or you can send it with a recommendation.
The, the meeting where we approved the seventy, I don't remember.
We didn't.
We didn't choose where it comes from.
I mean, that's always a huge issue, the issue is always, where's the money coming from?
Correct.
And I could have sworn it was a discretion of the Director of Finance that we put it up to him.
Were we on the table just so we could find out?
We're gonna need to do it, because the grant, we need, we need to have process, that's why it's back, we need to have process with the grant.
Well, even if we did say that, which is our normal verbiage, so to speak, can we just reiterate it again, based upon-
You just have to-
Send it to Board of Finance, is what I did.
Right.
It's hard to be done.
But you, per your own grant policy from the council, you specified where you would want it to come from.
Right.
So-
So, that's what we have to vote on, is where it comes from.
Correct.
Not that, well, we're just making a recommendation, we're voting on-
Make a recommendation to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance would decide.
I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Finance that the seventy thousand dollar thirty percent design, use magic words.
Match.
Match, come from the contingency fund.
For grant nine five two five six.
Yes.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven B, discussion and possible action on the sidewalks at Pettibone Community Center.
We already did, that's both.
Well, it's still here, I-
Okay.
Is that part of A?
It's part of A.
Why was it separated? Okay.
It's only at C.
Seven C, motion to approve ordinance, new chapter ten, light. Note, the public hearing closed on May, excuse me, April twenty-second, twenty nineteen. The final date for action on this is June sixth, twenty nineteen.
So, we had a, as we know-
Put a motion?
Put a motion.
Yes, that was a motion, I said-
And we have a second. Do we have any discussion on the public hearing that closed on four twenty-two nineteen?
I have a question.
Katie?
Yes, can this be amended? Where's our town attorney? I asked you this on once before about something else, can this ordinance be amended in the future, should, because of the changes that were made, if we find that A, something is too broad, not broad enough, public outcry, whatever it might be, can it be amended? What is required?
Oh, this whole ordinance can be-
Yes, but what's, my real question is, what's required?
So, with this particular ordinance, it does create a new agency, which is the blight prevention moratorium, as I said before, so that would require a town meeting approval because you're, it should probably be out, we're June twenty-fourth.
Would require a town meeting approval to change it?
No, no, to, to, to create, because the ordinance, when an ordinance creates a new agency, like Municipal Roads Committee, Municipal Local Committee, that requires ratification by town meeting because the agency's not provided for in the charter. But of course, any ordinance, once, once that's adopted, can be changed down the road through the public hearing process with this council.
Okay, doesn't require a whole nother town meeting?
No, no, just the initial ordinance required.
Okay, thank, but we will need to have the town meeting in order to put that enforcement agency in place.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other, Dr. Mull?
It'll be like twenty years ago having blight ordinance, what happened to that?
That's a very good question, it, the, so, Mayor Bass tasked myself and several department heads back in November, I believe it was, health, building, zoning, law enforcement, and fire marshal, with looking into that, and it sort of fell by the wayside at the same time, the, there was not a way to hit blight from a multitude of angles with that ordinance. So, through a lot of work by our zoning enforcement officer, Laura Regan, official Tom Hackett, House Director Mike Presby, they went and talked to their colleagues in other municipalities that had some good model blight ordinances, that there was also, there was a blight prevention component, which we really didn't have much of, and then a appellate process. Because I think the, the overall goal was, is that, yes, something was put in effect twenty years ago, it was part of the buildings and public properties ordinance, but it was not a blight ordinance unto itself. And I think the other problem that was trying to be addressed is, twenty years later, the town in a lot of those areas, again, zoning, building, health, is still getting a lot of complaints about abandoned properties that are not helpful to our residents or to the businesses that have to look at blight problems. So, let me just go up a minute, just, is that ordinance now gone? Did we approve this? The first line, I believe, of the ordinance appeals by ordinance. I'm listening. Okay.
And Peter, I also, Matt, wasn't in the old ordinance, there was nothing about enforcement needed or any action needed or even looking at it if it affected property values, and now, do we have that in here now?
That is in this one, definitely, and we've checked statute references, so they're all-
Right, and I, that's one of the things that I know some residents had taken issue with, that it had nothing, you know, you could do, you could have a lot of blight that would affect you or me, but we had no way to deal with it now.
There was no penalty.
And, and also, the, the, the spirit of the ordinance, the way it was written, and again, we took some different models, as Ridgefield is one, Sinsbury is another, Newtown was another, it was also a way to work with a property owner and give them the benefit of the doubt when they are a taxpaying property owner, that they don't know that they necessarily have a blight problem, it allows the blight prevention panel to work with that property owner to get it cleaned up without being punitive with fines or anything like that. But if the other one was more or less strictly a punitive ordinance, you'll want to be able to use that, I believe, when you have a, a property owner who may have abandoned the property and be in Arizona and difficult to reach or something like that.
Right, but as we know, a lot of, unfortunately, certain people who have run into this have had health issues, they can't maintain their properties, so this-
This allows the-
This allows the panel to go in there-
So, it's fair both ways?
To be fair-
For the blighter and the blighting-
Create some sort of assistance.
For example, if, let me just give an example, if somebody in the end of November decided is having a blight problem with their property and their zoning enforcement officer will solve these things, takes a blight retrograde, they say, look, winter's coming, if you give me four weeks, once the springtime comes and the weather draws and I'll get it cleaned up and I'll get it organized, I mean, they're gonna, it allows the panel to work with that property owner-
Be reasonable.
...the benefit of the doubt.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Closed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Item eight, executive session, and for the item eight, we already said that we'll ask John Tower, Vincent McDermott, to stay-
Dana Casarante.
And Dan Casarante.
Mike Dogg.
Yep, Mike.
We don't have him on. I just made a motion.
Second. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. So, we're into executive session?
Okay, we're back into regular session and executive session, no motions were made and no votes were taken, like to move us back into regular session?
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Okay, going to move that we transfer from DPW accounts as follows, the following amounts of money, from account one oh four, three zero, one one, five three, two zero zero, the amount of eighty-three hundred dollars. Account one oh four, three zero, two zero zero, five three, four zero one, the amount of two thousand eight hundred dollars. Account one oh four, nine zero, one oh eight, five three, zero zero five, the amount of five thousand dollars. Account one oh four, nine oh one, zero eight, five seven, two zero two, the amount of ten thousand dollars. And account one oh four, nine zero five, zero five, five seven, two zero three, the amount of five thousand dollars. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Like to move that we transfer sixty thousand dollars from the contingency fund to legal other.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.